With that, I will call this meeting to order. I believe everyone is here. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of March 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second from Councilman Fitch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion, the March 31st, 2020 Journal is approved.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Then Councilwoman Days.
Second from Councilwoman Days. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four, Fifth, First, Second, and Fourth Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, First, Fifth, and Sixth Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number eight, and that will be the order.
Item number nine.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, First District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Other Communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
To Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Report to the County Executive. Here we go.
Okay, I'm going to share. Trying to share my screen, and it's not going to take. Okay, technology. Let's try this.
On the screen where you should be able to see your face.
Yes.
Right above all the people, there should be several buttons.
I see them.
You may have the one that looks like a box with an arrow pointing out the top.
Yes, unfortunately, it's not lit. And perhaps, in the interest of time, I will offer to attach my video report to the end of these minutes, and will not walk through my slideshow which I had prepared, which apparently I can't share. So we will attach that for people to view, and I will email that to the council members for them to view, because it looks like my share ability is not going to engage. So I have nothing further to report, Madam Chair. I will attach my video to the end of your council meeting.
Can you please make sure that the video report from the County Executive is recorded into the Journal?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There is no report of special committees. We will move on to public forum. A few reminders for folks. Only comments that were sent to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day in which the meeting was today, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be reported into the public record. Folks can email their name and address and comment to that email address, which is posted on our website. The email must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of communication, which is what we usually allow per person during normal council meetings. And then the administrative director or designee will read your comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded in the Journal. I want to remind everyone that again, when submitting these comments electronically, you are expected to uphold the same standard of decorum that we anticipate during a regular council meeting. Thanks again to everyone that has helped us get this new public forum process set up. Madam Clerk, please read the comments.
Chair, we have five public comments this evening. The first one is from Ralph Heasley at 712 Florence Avenue, Webster Groves, Missouri, 63119. Subject is closing county parks. I disagree with your decision to close St. Louis County Parks. My partner and I are retirees and the high-risk population, and visit these parks regularly to get out much-needed daily exercise and to enjoy nature. Visiting these parks provides a boost to our mental health and a sense of well-being. Visiting these parks enriches my life. This decision to close access to parks denies a much-needed lift for people, and especially seniors who have been practicing isolation. Social distancing, hand washing, and other guidelines advise others around us to do the same. We have not witnessed people breaking social distancing guidelines in the parks. I think that denying access to parks is very little to produce person-to-person contact and takes away a much-needed venue for enhancing mental and physical health. An alternative that would be more acceptable is to require all visitors to wear masks. Also, I and many others often ride our bikes on Grants Trail. Closing Grants Trail and putting all of these bikers on city and county streets increases the risk of traffic accidents. Allowing bikers on Grants Trail should not be a virus transmission issue. It is easy to maintain social distancing on a bike. I urge the council to reconsider the closure of county parks and allow people to responsibly enjoy our wonderful parks. Next comments are from Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse, University City, Missouri, 63130. Madam Chair and members of the council, due to the difficult situation brought on by the coronavirus, many companies and organizations have been cutting the pay of those in top positions who make the highest salaries. I think St. Louis County should do the same. This would be especially appropriate in the County Executive's office, as there are so many on staff and they make considerable salaries. The latest hire in the continually growing County Executive's office was in February for another new position, Deputy Chief of Staff, at $95,000 a year. I do not recall there ever being a Deputy Chief of Staff before. The same as many hires in the County Executive's office, the new deputy has medical experience, but apparently none in government. Given all the outlandish spending in county government and the ever-increasing taxes that have been placed on residents, do not even think about a tax hike. You need to match government to the amount of revenue taken in. Surrounding counties are run much better and much leaner than St. Louis County government and with fewer taxes. Thank you for listening to my comments. Were submitted by Maria Chappal Nadal, 7133 Dartmouth Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 631. Given the attacks that took place at Animal Control under the direction of Spring Schmidt, Mr. County Executive, are you willing to put your medical credibility online to assure that she is competent and experienced enough as a non-medical professional leading up this pandemic charge? Here's your test. Before answering that question, please review the data in North County. Furthermore, now that we know that $175 million is coming from the federal government, please do not make the same mistakes that occurred in Ferguson. Systemic racism is still very much alive in every institution, and in policies and actions that intentionally ignore vulnerable
Good evening, and thank you for hearing me. My name is William Pyatt. I live at 7184 Christopher Drive in St. Louis County. This past week, it came to our attention that after a neighbor encountered someone doing work at 7190 Christopher Road, that a new owner had purchased the property, and halfway house for people with eating disorders had purchased this property. Most of us hearing the news thought, no way, this can't be true. We live in a residential area with no businesses. We were able to confirm this week that the St. Louis County Planning Department has come to the conclusion that a business such as Monty Nito qualifies to open in a residential area. As a residential owner, I strongly disagree with that interpretation. According to the county ordinance, 1003.107, number two, section 11, it states that group homes for the handicapped by not more than eight individuals, excluding supervisor personnel, et cetera, are in approved use. I won't go into legal concerns of this ordinance and this proposed business. I'll leave that for the lawyers. But I will lay out a few things that someone from the county would have even looked at the proposed business website. It should have put up red flags all over the place. For those of us who live off Christopher Road, choose to buy our home in a residential area for the sake of the neighborhood. Our community is a place for kids and families to enjoy their surroundings without businesses. For instance, we aren't allowed to run lawn care businesses, heating and cooling businesses, or in-home hair salons in this area. Or at least, we thought we were not. It is my position that St. Louis County has entered a gray area by sending the signal to Monty Nito that their business is in acceptable use at 7190 Christopher. The ordinance calls for group homes for the handicapped. I believe the intent that excuse me, I believe the intent of that is for handicapped to be allowed to have a place to stay. The intention, and will see title business, including clients, physicians, family therapists, physician, family nurses, and a large staff, all on a one-to-three-month revolving door basis for a profit. I believe that handicapped homes provide a home for those in need and are served by nonprofit organizations. That comment is from William Pyatt. Next citizen comment is from Jason Myers, 10702 Lisa Marie Court, St. Louis, Missouri, Public libraries should be available for curbside pickup or some sort of social distancing protocol. With people in their homes now, they need entertainment, education, and family time more than ever, and not everyone can afford Netflix, Hulu, et cetera. Not everyone can afford to have board games available or books to assist with kids homeschooling. And what excuse me, and what about the parents that depend on the library for those families that homeschooling that are homeschooling full-time? Will depend on this, and it should be reinstated. If restaurants can do curbside pickup, so can the libraries, and the employees of the public library need to work, even if they're still getting paid. Which I don't know if they are or not, people need normalcy of going to work as much as possible. Public parks should not be closed. I see no data that led to this decision, only anecdotal statements about stopping the spread. Parameters of assembly are in place, and that should be enforced. Park rangers can ask people to disassembly if there are too many too close. That's the solution, not just closing them outright. As a nearly daily user of Grants Trail, I get rarely excuse me, I rarely get within six feet of people. Excuse me. I tried my best while shopping yesterday, but encountered more people within six feet and five minutes of shopping than I did in three weeks of using the trail. As someone that works in the mental health field, people need sunlight. They need recreation and need to be able to take their kids to a park. Not every family has a backyard, not every not every kid has room to run outside. Kids need that daily, and walking the streets is not safe for little ones. We need to figure something else out, other than simply closing them. Jason Myers.
Chair, that is all the written communications.
That concludes public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 95, introduced by Council Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to $115,000 from the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District, appropriating the same for support of a regional St. Louis household hazardous waste program, and authorizing the County Executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 96, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Thomas Gantner for the provision of medical examiner forensic software services for the Office of the Medical Examiner. Bill number 97, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Revenue as trustee to grant a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District on, over, and under a portion of land acquired at the 1994 tax sale for Constr Storm Project. Bill number 98, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the as the County Executive's designated to execute Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, FY 20. Annual to St. Louis County being designated a sub-recipient of Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds awarded to the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number five.
Bill number five is held.
Bill Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Move to hold Bill number 36.
Number 36 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
By Councilmember Tracus.
Perfect Bill number 89, please.
Second.
There was a second from Councilman Harder. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 89 is perfected.
Bill number 90, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. I would like to add that Councilwoman Walton Gray has joined the meeting.
Bill number 90, I move to perfect Bill number 90.
Second by Fitch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 90 is perfected.
Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 91.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
I believe I heard Councilman Harder first, second from Councilman Harder. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 91 is perfected.
Bill number 92, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
For the perfection of Bill number 90.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 93 is perfected.
I believe that was 92.
That was my 2.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Bill number 92 is perfected.
Introduced by Councilmember Walton.
I move for the perfection of Bill number 93.
Councilwoman Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill number 93 is perfected.
Bill number 4, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 94.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 94 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
32, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute two for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute Bill number two for Bill number 385.
Substitute Bill number two for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 81, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Bill number 81. Roll call, please. I think I heard a second from Councilman Tracus. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Thank you. I think we lost her on the video. We'll move on to Councilmember
I can hear, I mean, I can see myself.
I think we're going to need to proceed. We do not have your video on our screens, Councilwoman. We just saw it for a second.
I was going to say, I can see it. It's on my phone now.
Please proceed.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 81, there are six ayes.
Bill number 81 is finally passed.
Bill number 82, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 82.
Second by Fitch.
I heard a second from Councilman Fitch. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 82, there are six ayes.
Um, everyone, Councilwoman Walton Gray is visible on the multi-screen. I can actually see her.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can see myself as well.
I think the public can see her as well. I think it's okay for her to vote. I can see her.
Okay.
Aye.
We'll go back to Bill number 81. Councilmember Gray, your vote?
Aye.
First bill? Okay, so on Bill 81, we actually have seven ayes. And we just voted on Bill 82. If you could give me your vote, Councilwoman Gray?
Aye.
Madam Chair, Bill number 82 had seven ayes.
Bill number 82 is finally passed.
Bill number 83, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 83.
Second.
Call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
There you go. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 83, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 83 is finally passed.
Bill number 84, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I'm for final passage of Bill number 84.
Second by Fitch.
Roll call.
Member Dunaway.
Aye.
Fitch.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Chair, on Bill 84, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 84 is finally passed.
Bill number 85, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the final passage of Bill number 85.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
Roll
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 85, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 85 is finally passed.
Bill number by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Bill number 86.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Dunaway.
Aye.
Council
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 86, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 86 is finally passed.
Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 88.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 88, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 88 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Chair, we have two resolutions. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution number one. It is recommended a transfer of PPE, sanitizing supplies, and accommodations to properly isolate first responders who have been exposed to the COVID-19 virus during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, the recommendation of the County Executive is based upon the need to protect the health and safety of St. Louis County police officers in order to allow them to safely and effectively fulfill the mission of the police department, as well as to prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the amount of $1,500,000 is hereby transferred from the emergency fund to the police department for support of the cost of personal protective equipment, PPE, sanitizing supplies, and accommodations to properly isolate first responders exposed to the COVID-19 virus.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Second from Councilman Tracus. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Harder.
Aye.
On resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for adoption of resolution number two, please. Second by Fitch.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Clancy.
Aye.
Iguas.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven
Resolution number two is adopted.
Unfinished bis-
Appointment will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Appointments and reappointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Third district.
Receive, file, and exercise the council's power of review and refer the matter back to the planning commission in accordance with the St. Louis County zoning ordinance.
So ordered.
Item number four.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Number five.
Appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business this evening, Madam Chair. We have one prepared order in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various county departments and offices.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second by Fitch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second from Councilman Trakus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
You, you too.
Tonight, we're going to discuss the St. Louis County response to the COVID-19 epidemic and how we would prioritize our CARE Act federal relief for our St. Louis County community. This slide shows the total cases to date. We have 1,173 total cases, 144 new cases in the past 24 hours, and 24 lives lost. The number of COVID-19 cases has grown exponentially over the past two weeks. And we can see that here in the dark blue line in that, in this graph. The bottom light blue line is the number of daily new cases. And we can see that growth as well. The age distribution of the COVID-19 cases makes what looks like a relatively traditional bell curve with a higher distribution age 50 to 59. And then another peak in the 20 to 29-year range as well. This next slide shows a zip code map emphasis in northern St. Louis County and west St. Louis County. But we expect this to fill in over the coming days and weeks as the virus spreads in our community in a more traditional manner. This just shows the initial impact of the virus in our community. COVID-19 deaths tend to be predominantly male, as this first chart shows. The overwhelming number of people who do not survive a COVID-19 infection have chronic medical problems. That's what this second pie graph shows in dark blue. And then the third shows the age distribution. The, as we would expect, the older patients tend to do poorly with the COVID-19 infection. And that's why our resources are pointed in that direction. This crisis has three pieces. It is a public health crisis. It is a humanitarian crisis, and it is a subsequent economic crisis. St. Louis County has three priorities to save lives, to help our residents meet their basic needs, and to revive the local economy. And that's what I'd like to focus on tonight. Saving lives has two points. First, to flatten the curve. And second, to increase our health system capacity. Flattening the curve is a traditional public health approach. Prevention through all of the methods that we've discussed, and then testing and isolating patients that have been diagnosed or are presumptive positive with COVID-19. Our health system has worked in a very coordinated way to increase their resources, increase their capacity, and work cooperatively together. So prevention on the public health side includes our hotline services by both our public health agencies and our hospitals. Our website, stlcorona.com, where most of our information is gathered. Our communications with the media. There are some billboards in the community as well. A social media presence in informing the public as to the proper things they can do to help themselves and where they can get services. And then our conversations with stakeholders. This shows the volume of calls through our hotline over time. We can see that start to fade as patients are able to access our hospital system information services and are also finding information through our website and social media. Visits to stlcorona.com continue to be robust. One day visits on April 6 were 5,997. The total last week was over 57,000. The total last month, 146,000. Flattening the curve has been what we've talked about the most. And those are through our social distancing measures. We've limited crowd sizes. We've limited restaurant services from dine-in and only allowing takeout and delivery services and curbside services. We've limited nonessential activities. And then most recently, we were forced to temporarily close our parks in St. Louis County. This shows the travel through Google Analytics in our community in St. Louis County. Retail travel is down 45%. Transit station travel is down 59%. But in the upper right-hand, we noticed that travel to our park is up 87%. And we knew that would increase following actions taken in St. Louis City to limit access to their parks and the action by the state of Missouri to close some of their parks. We expected crowding to increase in our parks soon after that. And that was one of the reasons why we were forced to temporarily close. The test piece of flattening the curve has been difficult in this national environment of extraordinary limited testing. We have worked to expedite screening following the CDC guidelines for testing. We've worked vigorously to access more tests through our resources. And we have worked aggressively to make sure that testing, however limited, was available equitably in our community. We continue to quarantine and isolate appropriate individuals. Patients who have tested positive or who have symptoms and are presumed positive are given isolation instructions at home. And if necessarily, necessary, then we have resources to isolate them or quarantine them in a hotel, which we have done with some of our first responders and some of our patients who don't have a place, such as our homeless population. This next slide shows our testing locations in the metropolitan region, including St. Charles County, Franklin County, and St. Clair County. These also show the St. Louis City and St. Louis County locations. As you can see, these are relatively evenly distributed, working very closely with our hospital systems. So building our health system capacity has been one of our top priorities. Not only increasing the number of hospital beds, but ICU beds. One of the first strategies deployed by our health systems was to stop elective surgeries to make room in their hospitals. They have recruited extra medical personnel and have worked very hard to acquire supplies and equipment. Our hospital systems are working very closely together in a coordinated way to increase data sharing, to streamline policies and procedures, and to coordinate their activities and keep track of their ICU capacity and ventilator capacity. We have created a St. Louis Metropolitan Pandemic Task Force through our health systems to provide us with a single point of contact to coordinate hospital activities and to work with our public health systems. Leading that effort is Dr. Alex Garza, who is a chief medical officer at SSM Healthcare and a former chief medical officer of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in the Obama administration. St. Louis County's first priority is to save lives. We have initiated that through first, community awareness and communication, establishing and enforcing social distancing policies and isolation and quarantine practices. The health system has worked to make testing available in our community, to make sure those tests were distributed equitably, and to build the health system capacity and coordinate their efforts. This shows the traditional curve of an epidemic. The dotted line across the top is the health system capacity prior to the techniques and adjustments that have been made to increase capacity within hospitals and the adjustments that we have heard about through the St. Louis Pandemic Task Force. Our second priority is to help our residents meet their basic needs. This means food, housing, safety, physical and mental health, a special attention to our vulnerable populations, including children, seniors, those in senior living facilities, individuals with disability, and people without a place to live. So as we watch our curve on our effort to meet basic needs, we can lay that on top of the epidemiologic curve for COVID-19 infections in cases. As we see the initial rise of the curve, that's when our residents need the most help. We are planning appropriately, and we understand as we get to the other side of the curve, we can start to open up our travel into community and ease restrictions. And we will continue to focus on basic needs, but we would expect those resources to be adjusted. Our third priority is to revive the economy. That means invest in our workers and workforce development, support our local businesses in the recovery to make sure we're using our county resources to match our local businesses with federal support in the stimulus act. And then reboot our government services, make sure we're providing the services that are needed to support our economy and restore us back to our traditional operating level. As we see in this slide, we mark the curve for the epidemiologic trend. Helping our residents meet their basic needs is the bottom blue line. And then we begin our efforts to revive the economy. As the case count starts to fall, we can ease restrictions and start implementing our task force that is dedicated to the economic recovery. The Federal Cares Act provides funding for the response to the COVID-19 epidemic. And we will be watching liquidity and financing through federal programs that we can help match with our small businesses and other employers. And then there is also support for transit, our transit agencies to make sure that our residents have a way to get to work and to get to school and to support workforce development and a return to full employment. The state is currently working through the Federal Stimulus Act, appropriating that at the local level through various programs. St. Louis County has the benefit of being able to access the federal treasury directly. But we also recognize that so much of our programming is coordinated regionally. And our regional partners will depend on the state appropriation, which we expect to move very quickly. And we will be working with them in a coordinated way, just as we are in the pandemic response on the public health side. So to review, the St. Louis County approach to this pandemic is to save lives, help residents with our basic needs, and revive the local economy. Thank you.